I tried to be an old man.
Hey Agent, make sure you're on your way. See you later.
It turned out real pretty.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm back, back out now.
Courtney's gonna drive the phone down there.
Courtney, you're there. Courtney's on there.
That's the town one.
You just got your call.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, I didn't think it was there. We don't have people.
We must get bruised up.
How you doing?
Will now be in order, we'll all rise. Have to be harder to introduce, first to introduce.
Greg Siders. Greg Siders from Hamilton Chapel Church.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, Lord God, as we approach your throne of grace this evening, Father God, we want to pray that you lift your name high above every other name. We ask your heavenly Father in kindness and great reverence, Lord, that you would just look down on us and forgive us, Lord, of many sins of life, our failures, Lord, our shortcomings. Lord, I pray, Lord, that you will give me wisdom and understanding. Father God, when I'm so, so, it seems like sometimes, Lord, there's so much to say and so much to do. Father God, I pray that you will temper my, my heart, temper my, my being, Lord, with your wisdom, with your understanding, with your patience. I pray your heavenly Father that before I speak, that Father God, that you will give me the temperance to know that there are many things, Lord, more important sometimes than the things that we think that are. That Father God, that loving you, putting you first ahead of us, putting you first, Lord, ahead of others. Father God, we pray, Lord, that we'll put others ahead of ourselves. We love you, Lord, we give you a praise, that we wish we could give you a better one, Lord, than we do. But, Lord God, we just, we just will lift your name high. I ask you, your heavenly Father, to be in this meeting tonight, temper the hearts of people, temper our mouths, Lord, that we will not regret things that said when we left this place and gone on, Lord. And when we come into your presence, Lord, there's accountability. And I pray, your heavenly Father, that you will forgive me of the many things that I've failed along this way. Lord, I pray for each one of this council, I pray, Lord, for those that's in, in the room tonight, and, Lord, for the officers that stand and offer their lives as protection, Lord, along the way, for people like me. I thank you, your heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we ask you to bless and give thanks, and amen.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag. I'm pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Now, we are going to have the public hearing for the readoption of Title 46.2 of the Virginia Code. If the attorney would please explain what this is.
So this is a proposal to readopt 46.2 of the Virginia Code, which is called the Motor Vehicle Code. This is just so that the town police can write tickets, can conduct, you know, traffic stops, things of that nature, under local ordinances rather than just a, it's a pretty routine matter that's adopted every, every year or so.
Would anyone like to get up and make a comment about this ordinance?
And what this does, it allows us to keep ticket revenue in the tail rather than giving it to the county.
If there is no one, we will proceed. Yes, yes. We will proceed. The next item on the agenda, we'll start out with the roll call of councils. Can we please have the roll call?
Call for more.
Yeah.
Paul.
Here.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
We move on to consent calendar, here's the approval agenda, the approval of minutes, list of checks paid, and the ballot, bank ballot report. Any discussion?
Make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I see.
Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote of that please?
Call for more.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes. The first item on the agenda is the audience comments. If anyone would like to get up and address the council and the mayor, they may do so now. Please state your name for the record and whether you live in or out of the town.
Exactly where you live, I'm out of town, property owner at Stacy Ranch Road. I'm bringing this up early, can I approach the bench, I've got some packets for the...
Go ahead.
As long as you don't mind us being shared in the public.
Oh, I don't care, you're fine. I want to make a proposal, I know the campground is coming up. In your packet you'll see a gate that's across the red gate. Clinton, Linda, and Carrie has all seen this gate. The proposal is this is your cheapest option to close it off with fencing, that's up to 12 feet, it's closed and done for the public. It's located at the entrance of the cut through, 20 feet off of National Forest. The second picture you'll see is the National Forest boundary posted there. We zoomed in, so you can see the fence is 20 feet from that. This way you can keep your campground along with your grant and not face litigation. The cut through is 40-foot high walls though, keep this in mind, a continuous falling shell rock which poses a huge liability for the town. Included in your packets are maps, it shows the National Forest boundary, including a recent land survey that we had done on the property group at the cut through. It shows the boundaries of the National Forest. There is no other National Forest pass at point, it's all privately ours. The other map is a GIS map that lists everybody's property, and the CNO will go right through it. So, we wanted to clear up the mud on that because there was a quote last time that there was National Forest on the other side. The campground, you go through the campground, there's National Forest, and it ends at that property line right there. Then it starts the private property. And that private property is where that gate's at. Now, some of you have not seen the gate, three of you have. That is where I would suggest putting up the, closing it off, that's your cheapest option. You know, right there, the mountain's half of it, and a gate across there, or a good fencing would take care of that. So, I wanted you to have time to think about it before we get to the campground. But that's the gate you was talking and asking about last time. Yeah.
So there is a barrier there.
There is a barrier there. And two 40-foot high walls on both sides of that gate. Now, I don't know how your insurance is, if somebody gets a rock in the head, they could shut you down. But those boulders fall daily, it's shell rock, and water is constantly coming out of the wall, which is pushing its shell rock down. Gary, you saw it, it's dangerous. So, I wanted to share that, that would be your cheapest option. And I wanted to give you that in the maps and show you the maps, it's all private property around here there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else like to get up? Please state your name and whether you live in or out of the town.
Angela Barnett, 115294 Crowe, I'm out of the corporation. And my comment is pertaining to this campsite as well. I think that it's just a complete waste of time, energy, and resources, the whole pit bull. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a good thing for the town. In my own personal opinion, I think that the town would be much better off to go... I don't know who has the authority over Hang Patch, Be Bottom, and Phillips Creek. I don't know if it's forestry, Army Corps of Engineers here, I don't, county, I don't know who it is. But I think it would be much better for the town to just drop this little campsite thing completely and do, do what would be best for the town by promoting and trying to get Be Bottom, Hang Patch, and Phillips Creek back open for use for, for the community, where families can enjoy it, you know, not just hikers that want to go back, you know, on top of a hill somewhere and see a tunnel, you know, and, which that's fine, I'm not down on that. But I just think it's completely, completely not good for the town to pursue any further with this campsite. And it was my understanding that y'all had gotten a grant, maybe a $40,000 grant. Y'all'd be better off to give that back than just forget the whole campsite idea.
Thank you for your comment. Please state your name, whether you live in or out of the town.
Rock Williams, Bristol, Tennessee, I am a landowner up in Stacy Ranch Road. All right. I've been talking to my lawyer, Matt Otten, here the last couple of months. We've been looking at the deed of dedication for this up here, and we have found a lot of defects in that deed. A lot of defects. We, we also set in some more research on it, that Ms. Cox, what she dedicated, according to the records up there, she owns scattered 10-foot sections, okay? It's never been surveyed, nobody knows for, none of the markings is up there. Nobody. When I went up and talked to John Mullins up in the tax, the real estate, he said they have no maps of where any of this lays, they cannot, there's no proof of where it lays. They have got a few maps. But the maps are so old, it's encrypted, that they cannot read them. They cannot give you the coordinates, they cannot give you nothing else with these maps. The campground, it's never been surveyed. But it was like I was saying, that the, this is the condition of the maps, and these are the only maps that the courthouse has. You can pass it around, whatever. But they cannot read these maps. And there was a deed of dedication done to this trail, to the campground, to all this stuff. And to me, it's, it is a waste of time to put that up there. It's not going to help the tourism into this town. What would help tourism in this town would be your local businesses, signed that here pointing to come down into town. I mean, to me, that's, that's what's going to help this town. But there's nothing, nothing on the maps as far as what owns what. Now, the, I mean, the people I tell are for, are going to be the taxpayers, it's going to eventually end up in a bit of this. The campgrounds, the, the, the equipment coming up there, if somebody gets a note, all this stuff, and all the maintenance and stuff on it. But that, that is my...
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to get up? Share your name and whether you live in or out of the town.
Cheryl Arden Pales. I have a code section here, that I would like to know why the hotel has business license that's following her. Also, I would like to know what hours the police officers put in, if one of the police vehicles is being driven home, and basically what's going on with the police department. Could I give you this?
Sure.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to get up? Please state your name, whether you live in or out of the town.
I live in the town. I live at 11517 Baker Place, right in front of Ms. Page's. As you're leaving town here, my name is Jennifer Edridge. And as of a while back, Mr. Calhoun, Calhoun had walked the path that the trail's supposed to be going through. And this is going to invade our privacy of our home. Because it's going to come right through there, right through our yard. And there's no way for them to get off before they come through our yard. So, if it was your homes in your privacy, would you like it to be gone through your yard?
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to get up and give a comment? Please state your name, whether you live in or out of the town.
Good evening, I'm Sierra Noble, I live out of town, but on Stacy Ranch Road. I just wanted to say that after all the research that we've been doing and continuing to do, there just seems to be a lot of unknown, a lot of questions that are still not answered. And I ask that you guys, if you continue with this, you at least take the time to look into what we have been trying to figure out, because there's a lot of stuff that still just doesn't make sense as to how this is even possible to go through, mine and my husband's land. We are putting our house up there, it should be there by the middle of the summer. And Mr. Paul saw exactly where our house is going, and it is right above this cut through. The gate is actually on what is our property that is also in question as a deed of easement, or whatever is unknown at this time. So, I would just like to ask that you guys take into consideration even just putting the gate up there and being done with it there, you can keep your campsite if you choose to. But we would just like for no one to be able to come through on our property and risk me, my family, the child, and my animals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to come up and address the council, the mayor? If there's no one else, we will go to the next item on the agenda, and that is reports. Would the police department like to come up and give a report?
Hey, woman.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, when we met last time, we were, we were concerned about the skilled gamer shops. We went out the very next day, lived 24 hours, everyone, the panel voluntarily complied with the law. Now, having said that, I noticed this evening, I've come in, that we got one that's getting ready to open up back to business. Now, we did stop, and I spoke with them, and they will be in compliance. So, that's, that's all I can say. I can't say that the other businesses indicated that they are going to be in compliance, and they're opening the machines back up. So, at this point, we've done what we can do until the state code says otherwise. The visits are continuing at the shops that y'all requested. Should, that's about all I can say about that right now. And happy to report to the council that thanks to Cindy's hard work and dedication, we were able to get another grant in excess of $50,000 for law enforcement equipment, which it does require a 25% cash match from the town. I think we have that covered. It will provide equipment that will enhance officer safety as well as citizen safety, and interactions between the two as well. So, I just want to let you all know that, we just found that out, I think, day before yesterday. So, thank you, Cindy, appreciate it. That's all I have for you.
There was a question about the, any of the vehicles, the police vehicles being taken home. Is that occurring for any of the officers right now?
No. And if there's any concerns about that, any citizens free come, we'll have that conversation.
And how many hours of coverage, we'll be discussing the budget after a while, how many hours of coverage currently does the police department have in the town panel?
Well, I think right now you have budgeted, you actually have budgeted for two full-time, so that'd be roughly 100 and... 172 hours.
Per month.
No, 172 hours every two weeks.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Would the fire department like to come up and give a report?
It's business as usual, we've got a truck in Bristol right now, getting a pump refurbished on it. We should have it back here in about another month or so. But, other than that, everything's going on, just rolling on with it. Just keep on keeping up.
Any updates on the move to separate from the town?
We're still working on that. We're incorporated, we just got to get out of the other stuff, take it care of it. But it's impressive.
Thank you.
No problem.
Would the town manager please give a report?
So, as we've talked before, we applied for the VDOT Ready, Set, Go program grant. We have not heard back from that. We also applied for a local programs workshop scholarship through VDOT. And that's more like a, like a training course for local communities on project development and management through VDOT. And I have better ideas on how to finance those, so hopefully we'll hear back from that as well. Our computers did come in, IT connects will be here next week to set those up. I also wanted to apologize that the video did not get on YouTube because the SD card was full, it did not capture the entire video. And I didn't want to post a portion of the video. So, I did purchase a larger SD card and a larger charging cord, so that that will not happen in the future. You also have in your packet from the Lions Club, a central, an ad for the Central Hospital football team. In the past, we've done a half-page ad, that price has gone up to $100. So, just wanted to see if that was something that council wanted to take part in again this year.
I would make the motion to approve the ad for the Central Football Program.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second then.
Any discussion?
What would that look like, like a picture of the Wildcat, or?
In the past, it was the, like the little letterhead symbol that says Town, Pound, and has like a little winding road up it.
Just basically says, you know, congratulations, we wish you luck in your year.
Okay. Well, we have a motion in a second, there's no more discussion. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Call for more.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Is there anything else that the manager would like to report?
That's all.
There was some discussion about the minutes being on the website in a timely fashion, or the minutes up on the website for this month's meeting.
Yes.
Okay, when would they put up?
They have to be up within seven days of the meeting.
Okay, so they will put up as soon as the mayor sent them out?
The minutes?
I mean, not the minutes, the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, yes.
It was.
There was an error, it did link the wrong agenda, but I did put the current, I did replace that with the current agenda.
There was a question about that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
The April minutes are all under order.
Okay, I can take a look at that and fix that. I can take a look at that and fix that.
You want to bring something to the manager?
Great.
Oh, well, that's in the agenda item, you want to do that now?
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, it is. It's number 23.
I'm sorry, I thought you had to enter your report.
Okay. Thank you for your report. For the EDA, want to give a report?
Yes, we do have some things going on. We have purchased a water heater, we're waiting to have someone put it in. We have had it, had the extermination done on it. And, let's see, right now, we've only got about $1,148 in the bank. We're paying out more than, we're not getting any. Yeah, we do have a possible person that might be, be interested in moving in and get these things done and looked at. Can you put in a water heater?
I probably could, but can you say moving in for a weekend, a week, month?
No, this would be a few days at a time, probably.
Okay, so like...
Like four days a week, maybe, and then, yeah.
On a regular basis?
On a regular basis, yes. Two, three days a week, four days a week, you know, whatever. Whatever they have to have.
What is the rate?
Well, I don't know yet. We have, we've knocked around a couple of things, but the way it is now, with what we have to do, probably about 150, 100...
A day?
No, no, not until we get everything done. No, no, a month, till we get everything done. Because it has to be decorated, it has, all the furniture has to be moved around. We have to have the water heater in, we have to have, you know, everything kind of ready to go in. It's just sitting there right now with everything we need to fix it. Almost everything. But we do have someone that's interested in part-time. So, that's something coming in, I mean, you know.
Any money is better than no money.
That's right, and, you know, it's all going out right now. Electric bill and water bill is... Electric wasn't very bad last month, because they had it cut down real bad. I think the bill that I wrote was nine dollars and something. But sometimes during the winter, it's like two hundred and more. But our water bill is always ninety-one fifty a month. Yeah, I mean, just base rate, so that goes out every month.
Is there an old water heater needing to be removed?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, it does need to come out, and the new one in, but yeah. But the brand new one's so pretty, it's sitting there. And it's so nice. She doesn't know if it's pretty, it's in the box. Well, I imagine it was clean and green.
Did anybody measure the, make sure that they would go back in and sign the place?
Jimmy and...
Bo.
Bo, yeah, Bo. Yeah, the girls did take care of that. We went and got it, we went and picked it up. So, but that's all I've got to say, I mean, if anyone wants to donate, we'll take it.
Thanks for your report. The next report's from the planning commission.
You want to talk right here, or you want me to?
We just, basically, it's almost, provided it's almost, really.
We did send it to Lenoir, just got it to them to look over it, they've come back with some edits. So, we've got to get those done. And then we have what was formerly the Vance property out near the subway, that was part of a tax sale, TACS sale. And the gentleman that owns Big Raiders has bought that property. Problem is, property's in the flood zone. Pretty much everything on that side of the street is in the flood zone. And we are in a position where we're going to have to think outside the box. What he's looking at doing is putting in something like tiny homes or RVs to try and get even some temporary housing here. So, that's something we're going to have to look at, think outside the box.
Okay. Well, that's all for the reports. The next, we go to old business, and we have an audit update. That's the next item. Is there any discussion?
I think Cox had requested some extra paperwork, which we dropped off to him today. And hopefully we'll hear from him this week about timelines on the pre-audit being done, or what else he might need from us.
Is that going to increase the cost at all?
The extra products that I took out to him today?
The extended time file process?
No, I don't think so.
No, that's not our problem. You want to talk about the problem, Brittany?
Well...
Tell us the problem.
We are looking for a new auditor. The auditor that we previously had that had agreed and given us a, you know, a rough estimate, has now said that due to some staffing changes, they will not be able to do our audit. So, we've currently talked to, I don't know how many different ones. We've got two, one out of Lebanon and one out of Texas, that we are hopeful for. They're licensed, well, they said that they were going to be getting licensed in Virginia, is that right?
He said he was not licensed, but he would file for reciprocity. And if that did not work, then they would go ahead and get the Virginia licensing.
How did we find these people in Texas? Just Google search?
Yeah.
Pretty much. Pretty much.
So...
And there were others that we found. The gentleman in Texas said that he was thinking anywhere from eight to fifteen billion thousand to do it. We did have one that came back and said three thousand, which...
I think that's about it.
Scares me. We had another one out of Florida that was twenty-six thousand for the first and twenty-three thousand for the second.
They might say, though, it would be around eighteen for them.
The one in Lebanon, yeah, they were thinking eighteen. And then, we did talk with Dolores Smith, and she said she would not be at all afraid of a remote audit. So, you know, just to make sure we cover our bases there.
So, nobody in southwest Virginia, other than possibly this one, wants to touch it?
Hopefully, the one in Lebanon, yeah. Well, there wasn't, we talked to Rodifer and Moss, but it was far out of our budget.
So, we'll just put it back on the agenda next month and hope for better things.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the broadcasting of meetings. Any discussion?
I think you've covered that, that your SD card was full, and therefore it wasn't on this... But it will be on the website. This meeting should be on the website.
Yes, yeah. I went ahead and purchased a much larger SD card that I don't think, I don't think we'll have a problem with. But I didn't want to post an incomplete video.
Okay, thank you for that. The next is grant updates.
Where do we want to start? So, a little bit of a heads up, so the contractor for DEQ was here yesterday to do an asbestos study on the portion of the Rattletale building that we're looking at removing. So, DEQ is paying for that. We still have, we've got an extension on the DEQ grants for demolition of buildings because we haven't used all of that money yet. And as quick as we get something back on the asbestos study, then we should be able to go ahead and move forward with the demolition. We're still waiting on FEMA to approve our design for the slope on Church Street. So, heaven only knows, Doge has created a hot mess with a lot of the grants. The EJCPS and the brick grant both have been lost through Doge. Those were through AppVoices. The Mav grant is moving forward. We have gotten some pictures of the carving that they've already started on their home sites. There is a documentary that's going to be made of the Mav grant with regard to the stained glass. That's a company out of Nashville that the artist is working with to get that stained glass constructed. What am I leaving out? The Amler, we can't move forward with Amler until we've got the audit. We have talked with Amler, so we can keep them updated as to where we're at. We did submit two letters of intent to Amler for additional grant funding with this round. And I do not remember the exact date that the final grant application has to begin with those.
Any more discussion? Okay, the next item is pocket park and slide update, item ten. Any discussion or an update?
Did we purchase the building?
Yes.
Have we sold the building?
The asbestos survey had to be done today before we could do anything else.
We have two interested parties in that building. So, no, we have not sold it yet. The second person did look at it today.
Does the asbestos testing, do you think that that will hinder us selling it, or do you think it's just a formality?
The asbestos is just on the portion that we're moving, has nothing to do with the rest of the building.
So, it shouldn't affect the sale?
No, both possible buyers are aware of the asbestos in the building, and they are aware of how to handle the asbestos in the building.
So, we're moving right ahead with the being up five thousand dollars, and that's it?
Maybe less.
Maybe less, be good. Like the second buyer or not? Say a little more?
We shall see.
You have an auction.
The second buyer did tell me that this building is lots better than ninety-five percent of the buildings that they invest in, ninety-five percent. I said, really? He looked, he looked it up and down. And the contractor did tell me yesterday, when he went in to check for the asbestos, that he had checked everything he could possibly check in hopes of finding something for us. So, I don't know if that could mean some additional funding from DEQ with regard to pulling down the rest of that building or not, but we shall see.
Glad it's moving along.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the campsite. Is there a, is some discussion or motion?
Did the attorney get to look at the packet that were amended?
I believe, were you talking about the segment first?
The packet that the landlord gave us?
No, I was looking over Gary's shoulder.
You want to do one? So, I guess the question would be that gate that's pictured there. You know, that gate is in one place, restricting people from going into the campground, I guess. Would it be legal for us to build another gate on the other side of the campground?
So, I think it's important to understand that the trail, based on the surveys that I've seen, based on the deeds that I've seen, was bought in fee simple by CNO back in the forties. That means that they bought it not as an easement, but with full rights and uses, any landowner would have, which unfortunately cuts several property owners' property right in two. So, in putting up a gate, I think that falls upon the landowner. My understanding is the town does not own any portion of the CNO rail bed.
Correct.
That would be Jamie Cox and Ayers, I believe, there's other people involved in that. And that would be potentially impacted by any sort of deed dedication, which had been executed, which does not convey any sort of like ownership change. What that conveys is a right of the public to use it, the same as the public can use roadways or streets or sidewalks. So, I think in putting up a gate, that is a complication of certain rights and responsibilities that may have already been conveyed to the public, that are likely have already been conveyed to the public. And I don't think the town has any authority to do so, because they don't actually own the land. The land, as I understand, is owned by Jamie Cox and Ayers. The land meaning CNO rail bed, not the property on either side. I think fifteen feet, that is the rail bed. So, does that answer your question?
So, what you're saying, like, this is average, she owns a home at the end of that trail. Does the CNO rail bed go through her property, or does it stop at her property?
So, if we're looking at this, right, as a good illustration, you know, it cuts property in two. Most, if not all, of the CNO that doesn't touch Forest Street cuts property in two. That was how it was written in the forties, that was how it was conveyed, and that is the nature of property. Once you sell it, you have sold it. These landowners sold section of property in the forties to CNO. So, whether or not, are you asking specifically if her home sits on the trail?
If people can be prevented from coming across her property. It looks like her carport is right where the bed would go.
If I could illustrate, I guess, using this again, and thank you for providing this as well. If they are on the trail, then they're not actually on the property. They're on Jamie Cox's...
The bottom right of the map.
So, if you're, you know, if you stray from that line, right, if you go off of that trail that is owned by Jamie Cox and Ayers, which was previously owned by CNO Railroad, which I think Highland Development Court also, Corporation also owned at some point in there. If you stray from that, then you are on private property, you're subject to trespassing.
What if that goes right to a carport, for instance?
Then, actually, the owner of the rail bed can instigate some action for that carport to be moved, because it's the property.
So, this average, would you like to look in the map and see if your property is on that?
If I may, Mr. average, are you represented by an attorney?
Uh, no, but we will get one.
I have to be very careful about communicating with anybody who's represented by an attorney without your attorney's permission or without...
The black line is the railroad bed. And which part of the property is yours? So, the bottom right would be where your property would be?
Yes.
So, which one's your property?
It would be, let's see, this one was down below this. So, ours would be right here. And our property goes all the way over the hill, that is past our, past our carport.
And to clarify, I was not trying to say the carport is trespassing. I was just trying to specifically answer his question, which was, if it's sitting in the middle of land owned by Jamie Cox, you know, is it, is it your property, basically, so?
It might not be the same.
And really, this is, this is a, you know...
You can get a copy of, because everything we have, you have a right to a copy of.
And this is not like, you know, a proper survey with meets and downs, this is pulled off of like GIS. So, it's, you know, its accuracy is also... I was using it more so for illustration purposes, rather than the natural...
Yes, and we do own our land completely, because we just paid it off. So...
There's no right of way through Carolina.
Yeah.
I don't mean to misrepresent the situation, all he was just asking a hypothetical.
That white line is the bed.
Yes.
Then it would go through...
Her property.
But it may not be.
This is not a survey. So, we can't, we can't actually, we can't actually take this to a conclusion that has real-world consequences. I'm using it purely to illustrate hypotheticals. If you get it surveyed, that's what it shows.
Something for the kitchen.
Right, something for any property owner, if they're sitting on property they think that they might not own, they ought to get a survey. They absolutely ought to get a survey to make sure that they own what they, what they have bought, you know, what they've earned and saved to buy, so.
So, is that first red fence, is that on the CNO bed, or is that before?
I would not be able to know without an actual surveyor going down and saying, here's... I mean, we are operating with some degree of limited knowledge as to, you know, point to this and say, is this on the CNO rail bed? It could be, it could not be, I'm not sure. I don't have, you know, a survey that was done this week in front of me, which shows beyond a shadow of doubt, this is where the property is. That's what surveyors do. They go and they search old deeds, and they find exact boundaries. And, you know, I wouldn't be able to say with any degree of certainty that that sits on the bed or not.
Can I add something to that?
Go ahead.
They bought their property off of Ms. Page. Ms. Page got her land back from the railroad, and Ms. Jim Robinson. When all that happened, she went to William Walker, and he got her land back. There is no right of way through her property. It was getting back to Ms. Page. They bought it from Ms. Page, they're moving on the right of way. So, I just want to clarify that.
And for the purposes of the mayor, for the purposes of people present, and my own ethical obligations, I have to state that it is best if parties who have obtained an attorney wish to communicate. With the town, it is best to do that through an attorney. I do not want any misunderstandings here, I do not want any sort of, since Mr. Dotson is not, Matt Dotson is not present, you know, I have to walk a fine line here in terms of how I speak about this, so that I'm not addressing any particular parties who are represented that way. Because I'm ethically prohibited from contacting or communicating with representative parties unless their attorney consents, and Mr. Dotson has not consented to communicate.
So, what you're saying is, we cannot legally, as far as you know, block this particular piece of property because of the deed that was drawn up in 2010?
We cannot legally block the CNO rail bed, because we don't own it.
But we could abandon the campsite and let it grow up, and then nobody would go up there?
Yeah, the town, that's a political question, not a legal one, I guess.
But the campsite has nothing to do with the CNO.
Well, nobody's going to go on this trail unless they go through the campsite.
That's true.
I think it is true. If the campsite has grown up, and there's weeds and snakes, and it's eventually, trees grow up in it, nobody's going to get to the trail.
We will have a audience comment later on on what I had. We will have a audience comment later on on what I have.
I mean, you yourself, did you not tell Debbie Hale your boys have been up there?
We don't.
No, they've been camping across, go up the sewer plant road, go across there, where they went.
So, up where it's like high on?
Where the pound river is. Yeah, that general area.
But that would be, if we just said we prohibit anybody from further developing the campsite, it would grow up. And then anybody could go up there and camp because it's public property, but there'd be a bunch of weeds there and they wouldn't want to.
I mean, legally, yeah, you could prohibit it as long as, my understanding is we have a deed of dedication in place for the campsite itself. So, you can obviously neglect it. You have a coverage of liability under Virginia Code for Trails and Campsites and Recreation Facilities where you're relieved of liability. Should someone get injured on that property, it's an assumption of risk pay. But I don't think you can necessarily prohibit people from going there. You couldn't like gate it, you couldn't, because of the deed of dedication.
Then why do we have that red gate there?
We don't.
That's not ours.
We don't. And we wouldn't have the authority to do that, even if it was on the campsite property that we own, because of the deed of dedication, we might be infringing on public right, if that makes sense. Because once you do that deed of dedication, that confers kind of irrevocable public right on the property, so. Because the last council executed that and this council would inherit it, if that makes sense.
So, I can make a motion that we abandon any care of the campsite until council changes its mind?
Yeah, I think that would be a good way to sound.
Well, I'll make a motion in order to keep people from coming through the campsite, we abandon as a town taking care of the campsite. And this would include just specification, Debbie Hale and any volunteers she might bring. That's my motion.
You're saying no town employees?
No, no, we abandon, taking care of the campsite. Anybody wants to come there and sleep with the snakes, they can. But we're going to just let it grow up until we have some sort of a settlement with the landowners below the campsite.
Legally speaking, also could be accomplished by just tabling it to the end of time.
Tabling it to the end of time?
There's no present vote, as I understand, authorizing anybody of the town to move forward in constructing the campsite, is that correct?
Debbie Hale was authorized to apply for the grant to proceed with the campsite, so yes, that has been authorized.
Okay, so there is a current authorization for the campsite project to move forward.
So, that is my motion to take away any authorization for anybody to develop the campsite until further notice from the town.
I need to vote it down.
Well, we will if you get a second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Right here.
Okay, any more discussion?
I mean, anything that's outside of our town limits, I think we need to cut and run. And I think that this, well, if it grows up, then what that would mean is the landowners below the campsite would be happy. And if someone wants to trudge through the tall grass, whatever grows up, they have that right. But nobody has the authority to develop or care for the campsite for further notice.
I would make a substitute motion to proceed with the campsite. We have the grant money. It's our property. You know, if we do nothing, you expect nothing. So, that's my motion.
We have a substitute? Is there a second to that substitute?
A second.
Any discussion on the substitute?
Just to be clear, the substitute motion continues to entangle the town of town with this out-of-corporation campsite.
You were here when it was bought.
And 2010, and I came on in 2012. So, just to be clear, the substitute motion disentangles the town of town from taking care of the out-of-town campsite.
Not the substitute.
And not substitute?
No, 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 no. The substitute motion says we continue to take care of the campsite that's out of the corporate limits. And also threaten the town with a lawsuit from the landowners below the campsite.
The property does not belong to the town, nor does it belong to the landowners they were referring to. This is Jamie Cox's land. I call for a question.
There's a call for the question? Can we have a, we have to, second, second? We have to vote on the question? Okay, can we have a vote to call the question?
Call for it.
Uh, I mean, I'm finished talking about it. Yes.
Paul.
I'm not supporting anything about that campground. I believe, I, I, I think anything goes for that campground, I'm not for it.
Mr. Hall, this is just a vote to see whether we want to vote on it.
You didn't say.
He said yes.
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 Kennedy, Melons, Powers.
Yes.
Okay, and the call to question?
Yeah, can we have the substitute motion read by the clerk?
That's what we were going to ask you all to go ahead and repeat your substitute motion.
Go ahead. To continue with the construction of the campsite, as we already have the deed of dedication, and we also have the grant money.
That is the substitute motion? Can we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Uh, Call for it.
No.
Paul.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
No.
And the substitute motion does not pass? Therefore, we return to the, return to the original motion? No ask for any more discussion?
You can read the original motion.
Can you read the original motion?
Y'all got me confused. I'll be honest.
We had a read the original motion.
Okay, I didn't write it down, but it says that the town of town will stop.
Taking care of the campsite.
Will stop, let me get it right. The town of town will stop any further development or maintenance of the campsite and its property. And this would include, for clarification purposes, Debbie Hale and any other volunteers.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more, we are the whole question. Okay, so can we have a roll call vote on that motion?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No.
Melons.
No.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Is there any more discussion on the campsite, item of campsite?
Um, yes. Did you all receive an email from Jerry Bentley? I believe he sent it to all of, all council. He sent it to me as well. If you want to just share during the campsite session.
Was this something you could have seen before we voted last?
No, this is separate.
Would any of the council members need more time? Form divine?
I think he just wanted everyone to be aware of this and think on it. He's not here this evening, so, I mean, I can make sure, I can ask him to come to the next meeting. He said he couldn't be here this evening.
I would make the motion to table his proposal until the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table his proposal until the next meeting?
So.
Do we have a second? Is there any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul. Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yeah.
Okay, and the motion passes? Tabled, we go on to item number twelve, and that is the budget. Any discussion or motion?
I guess we'll be covering it under new business, adaptation.
Okay. Adaptation of.
Adoption of the budget.
Adoption. Yeah. Okay, so we will just pass over that. We will get to that later on under new business. Next item is boundary adjustment. Any discussion or emotion?
Are we able to have the public hearing on the boundary adjustment next month?
We did get all the current surveys. We have small surveys that we can pass out. We also have the larger map, so.
And if I may, I think probably what is best to do in preparation for the public hearing, because there is a section of code where there can be kind of one single publication and joint publication where the county and the town kind of split it. What I'd like to do is just talk to Carrie Melons about how they would like to, you know, move forward because they have to have a public hearing, as well, also, I think as a matter of professional courtesy. Kind of fill them in on where we're at in the process, see if they want to do a joint publication. If not, we'll just roll on and have our own hearing. But we've got all the materials, to my understanding, we've got all the materials together. I need to redraft the agreement, just update it in terms of date and things of that nature, attach the survey to the public hearing, and then from that process, once it's later on, we go to the circuit board.
We didn't include these in the packet.
Yeah. That's, I think, does that include both, both sections?
It is. One is on the front, one is on the back.
And see, that's basically what would be provided to the county, and that would be the substance of the agreement, is saying this is what is now going to become the jurisdiction of the town. One thing that I do need to address is to make sure that we look into, making sure that there's no perfected property owners in terms of people who used to be in the county and now being in the town, for instance.
There's no residents.
I didn't, I mean, who owns that property?
The county.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we're good with that. That was my thinking, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't like a house somewhere off of the side who's now paying taxes to the town or something.
So, your suggestion is you'll talk to the county attorney and see if instead of a joint hearing?
Yeah, just, just as a matter of professional courtesy, see how they would like to go forward, if they want to try to coordinate that. If, 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 you do yours, we'll get in touch and do it later.
They'll have to have a public hearing as well.
Yeah, before they adopt. They'll need to adopt it, we'll need to adopt it, same procedures, basically.
I move we just table it till next month, and then we'll let you talk to the attorney.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. So, if there's no more discussion, we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is the PSA easement. Any discussion or a motion?
I would make the motion to turn the easement so that the town PSA can continue.
Is that in our second?
It was in there last night.
It was tabled from last night.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second? Is there any more discussion?
As long as it only deals with property number thirty-two, which is the town of town, I have no problem with that.
Refresh my memory, that's town property going to the county via easement?
It's just an easement for this.
I think, I think for, for purposes of compliance with Virginia Code, it has to be in a form approved by the town attorney. I think I'll sign up on it, just wanted to mention that to make sure it's the correct one.
Did you get a copy of that?
Last meeting, I believe. It's in, it's in my, my pound drawer, at the drawer, just for all my pound stuff.
Okay, any more discussion?
Just make sure that's in the minutes, that we understand, it's only talking about number thirty-two.
There's no more discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, item number fifteen is streetlights. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Yeah, I know what that is. So, Mr. Hall had mentioned streetlights that were out, and you were going to get us pub numbers?
I haven't had time. I won't lie down here.
Would someone like to table it till next month? Maybe you could update that? Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Table it till next?
Table it till next, next meeting.
Do we have a motion to table it till next meeting? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a second? Is there any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yeah.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yeah.
And the motion passes? Now, we move on to new business. The first item under new business is item number sixteen, the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax rates.
Sixteen and seventeen be the other, or?
Uh, we need to probably do those separately, just because they are separate.
I make a motion, we approve the compromise that was talked about at the last meeting, which would be to lower the real estate taxes to forty-four cents for a hundred dollars and to double the cigarette stamp tax.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
You have a second?
But I will point out that forty-five cents was something that you approved in seventeen. We are going backwards at this point?
Well, I did not vote for that.
You did. I went to the minute to check.
I did not. I did not. I did not vote for the forty-five cents when it was originally approved.
It's in the minutes that you voted for the forty-five cents.
I did not vote for it when it was originally approved.
Okay.
That would have been in two thousand thirteen, I believe, two thousand fourteen.
So, it's been forty-five cents for eleven, twelve years?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second? Is there any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. That motion passed. We will move on to item seventeen, if there's no more discussion about the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax rates? Okay. Item seventeen, adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Is there any discussion or a motion?
Now, where is the top of the budget and the one with those tax rates?
You have a copy in the back. So, there are grant funds that were added to that, the grant that Sandy just bought. Debbie Hale also bought approved for grants, so that's the only changes you seek to that is the addition of those grant funds.
Okay, is there a motion?
And those are men and the out. I would make the motion to approve the attached budget with the tax rate changes as previously discussed. It is within the ordinance? It's attached.
We have a motion? Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
And for the record, that budget preparation transaction sheet is separate pages or so.
Okay.
No, I think that considering the makeup of the council, I think what the best we can do on the taxes is to lower the real estate tax rate by one cent, and then we'll double the cigarette tax, which would take the burden away from the citizens and move it on to people primarily who live out of town to buy their cigarettes. So, I am going to support the budget with those changes. I appreciate the counsel number Kennedy mentioned that compromise last meeting.
Well, I do think there's a lot of other things that we need to look at. You know, other communities are charging for vending machines. We don't charge anything for vending machines. Somebody here local that's got those machines. So, I think those are things that we need to look at for next year's budget. Whatever we take away from being a responsibility of the citizens has to go somewhere. We can't go back.
Are we talking about cigarette vending machine?
No.
The vending machine.
It's vending machine.
In general. It was attached to your code with any machine.
No, I want to tax the vending machine owner because they're making money in our county. None of it's coming to us.
And all taxes are passed along to customers.
They don't have tax on it when they buy a store.
Okay, we have a motion. Did somebody make a motion?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Anyone make a motion? Would you make a motion?
Yeah, Laverne made a motion to approve the...
Oh, the budget.
The name of it, I should do a roll call.
So we do have a second? Yes, any more discussion?
Just to clarify this, there is no tax on your can and coke and machine, yes. That's just what she suggested for next year.
Yeah, something we need to look at is kind of the situation that the banks have out there. You know, things that are in the floodway, we, we have to look outside the box.
If there's no more discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Call for him.
Yes.
Hall.
I guess she is.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes? If there's no more comment on that, we'll move to item number eighteen, which is the readoption of Title forty-six point two of the Virginia Code.
Make a motion to adopt.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Call for him.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is called noise ordinance. Is there any discussion or maybe a motion?
I had a citizen come to me about the loud vehicles and loud, like radios or whatever and automobiles that are going down Main Street, and they were just wanting to know whether or not we have a noise ordinance. In some of the towns, you'll have, like it says the word noise, has like a little crossbar through it, and just check into that, see if we have a noise ordinance here in Pownell.
There is a noise ordinance, and the last time I recall reading it, it said after ten P M.
So is that something, Chief, you're familiar with?
No, sir, I did not. I did contact the police officer, the vice county official, which is all that is enforceable. Uh, they haven't got back to it, they simply didn't link to what vice county has. Uh, town police cannot enforce vice county ordinances. Uh, I don't know if we have anything there that's on file or not. Uh, my recommendation to the council would be to solicit the vice of community code to get all the ordinances codified and up to date. Uh, and if, you know, they can, if you, if someone reaches out, if you guys offer, I might reach out, and probably maybe just scan what the old ordinances were, get them to give an estimate on how much it would cost to update those ordinances, and to put them into practice. Uh, but I haven't heard anything back from vice county, so I don't actually know if we have anything that's on file there in the courthouse or not. And I can tell you that speaking with, uh, other jurisdictions, uh, I know, I know one police officer cut something in, uh, the judge had to go look for it, police officer to see if it was on file, it wasn't, and he got pretty good at stolen, to help bring that stuff back in there. So, I would prefer for the town to reach out to community code, and I'll, I'll help you out, bring my hand with that, and just see what the council's get everything off file, and they have a look into it. The noise ordinance, uh, you know, a few years ago, maybe the attorney can say, well, before, I know there was some issues with, you know, having to have decimal meters, a lot of noise ordinances in Virginia was tossed, and they were not enforceable for all time. I don't know what the status of that is currently, but I know that says one of those issues that's out of, for a lot of different places.
So maybe we can look at the ten P M noise ordinance next month, and just decide what we're going to do, if we want to do anything.
Okay.
Are you making a motion to table it?
Well, I was, I mean, if we need a motion, I can make a motion to table it till next month.
Okay, we have a motion, table it till next month, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, can we, is there any more discussion on it? Is anyone opposed? If no one's opposed, we will move forward with it as it passes. Okay? The next item on the agenda is civil suits. Um, is there any discussion, maybe a motion on that?
I just had some questions for the attorney. Um, last month at our meeting, following the council meeting, we've had two civil suit papers filed against a, an audience member, and I guess the first question is, is it normal for uniformed officers to serve civil suits?
So, a- actually, for a little while, the air office in Clintwood, we had used a Clintwood PD officer to serve our civil suits. Um, oftentimes you'll see police officers kind of engaging private process servers, you know, hey, give me fifty bucks, I'll serve your papers for you, because as attorneys we have to get our papers served properly, personal service by hand. So anybody who is above the age of eighteen, not involved as a party or otherwise interested in the subject matter of litigation can serve papers. Uh, they do so at their own risk if there is a mistake, they can be liable to lawsuits from attorneys who, you know, case went past the statute of limitations or whatever because someone, somebody wasn't served. Um, and my understanding is the department shouldn't be serving things because they're not a sheriff. Uh, only sheriffs, counties will authorize a serve process, but I would defer to the chief and, and as a matter of department policy, whether or not the chief wants his officers, uh, to be engaging in private process or...
So, um, in uniform, is that typical with the sheriff's department servicing?
Well, with the sheriff's department, may, maybe, yeah, but I mean, whether you're in uniform or not, that's not legally relevant or...
Okay.
Or, or relevant at all to, as far as compliance with the code.
Should you be on the clock when you serve civil papers?
Suppose you can be, again, that's a matter of department policy. You know, a chief can say, hey, I don't want you getting paid by the town to do this private gig that's earning you money or whatever. Uh, so I mean, that's again, a department policy, but in terms of compliance with Virginia Code, you know, there's requirements of service, they, they have to be strictly met, uh, because fundamental right to due process in this country, thankfully. Um, and when they're not met, it's, it's something that's raised in the context really of that specific litigation rather than it is any sort of penalty that could fall back on a department or a person, other than if they don't do it properly and they're paying money to do it.
Is there any conflict of interest if, say, an employee of a police department is filing a lawsuit, civil suit, and then a member of that same police department delivers the papers?
Well, I think that gets into more of a question about specific litigation, and again, the remedy for any sort of defects in service is raised in the context of specific litigation. Uh, it's not something which is a matter of town business.
I'm understanding criminal, civil, I didn't know if there's a difference.
Well, yeah, there, there's certainly a major difference because criminal actions are often preceded by warrant, where officers have the constitutional authority and flag duty to, uh, charge criminal offenses, whereas a civil suit, that's, you know, you or I can serve a civil suit, as long as we're, we're not involved in the litigation or otherwise interested. Um, you know, whether we do good service or not, that's something that a party who's been served can raise in their litigation, and their attorney should raise in their defense, uh, as far as it relates to town business or policy. Again, I think it, it falls on what the, the chief wants to do in terms of his department, whether he wants his officers serving civil process or not.
So can a town council have a policy to where none of its officers can serve a civil suit while in uniform or on the clock?
It would be extraordinary and unusual, but I suppose, um, uh, I'm trying to think through if there would be...
In other words, if someone's going to give them fifty dollars for serving a paper, I don't think the town ought to be paying them.
Oh, okay, so specifically, yes, if you are, if you are engaging in private process or do you...
Yeah, I mean, you know, you can do whatever you want with your ball cap on and your...
Right. Yeah, I think that, I think that's, you know, that would be, I, I misconstrued what I think you were asking.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about like a blanket prohibition on the...
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think, you know, that, again, is a matter of department policy, and of course, the chief serves as well and pleasure of the council, so...
So I would make a motion that no one, one who is employed by the police department of Pownell can serve civil suit papers while they are either in uniform or on the clock for the town of Pownell.
Okay.
That'll be my motion.
We have a motion? Is there a second to that motion?
I do.
Okay, we have a second. So any discussion on the motion?
I think it's just an intimidation factor, and so I would like to see this policy implemented there. If someone's doing it on their own time, their own clothes, that's fine, I just don't want the town of Pownell being drawn into the drama.
Okay.
I don't see that it's our place to determine how the chief of police should bring this up. In my opinion.
But if we disagree with one of his policies, we do have the right to, uh, pass a resolution against it.
Is there any more discussion? Is there no more discussion?
Read the motion.
Yes.
You said, no one who employed by the town on the police department can serve papers while on the clock or in uniform.
Civil papers.
Okay.
Civil suit papers.
Just to clarify, kind of the procedural posture, that is really a resolution of the council instructing the chief of police who's appointed by the council to not do something. It's not enforceable as same ways of ordinances, but it is something that makes it from the council's instructions. Hey, don't do this with us.
I, I just think we need to stay on our own.
And I think if you have unfettered authority, that sometimes that can lead to actions that are unwise.
I think if more control was handled through the council, then these things wouldn't be a problem. Call for the question.
Okay, we have a call for the question? Can we have a vote? A roll call vote on the call for the question? This is whether or not we are going to be voting immediately on...
Voting in discussion.
Yes, a voting discussion.
Okay. So call for him.
I didn't have anything else to say, so yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
So we can, we can read the motion one more time, so that's a different, different cause, just for...
And because I'm in civil the first time, I would have caught it on the minutes.
Yeah.
I just want to make that clear. Uh, you said, no one who employed by the town of, like, town and pound police can serve civil suit papers while on the clock or in uniform.
That's it.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Call for him.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No.
Mullins.
No.
Powers.
No.
And the motion is not passed? Is there any more discussion on the item on the agenda? If there's no more discussion, we will go to item twenty-one, town Methodist Church. Is there any discussion or maybe a motion?
I just, uh, understand that the town Methodist Church is having some issues with building legally, and at this time, I think Pastor Carter says just pray for the situation, but I just want to let you know the council, if you ever need a resolution of support or anything, we're a hundred percent backed.
There's no more discussion on item on the agenda? We will move to newly acquired building. Any discussion?
I'm going to do the cover again.
No more discussion? We'll move to item twenty-three, which is computer servers. Any discussion with the manager, like, to brief us on that?
So, um, the IT department was here, of course, when we ordered our computers, um, and they talked to us about our server situation. So currently RMS, the computer system that the PD runs off of, is not actually on a server, it's on a computer. Um, there is a backup, but it's not a true server, and it should be on one. Um, it does not meet the specs that Southern Software needs, and RMS needs to be moved to a physical server, because what we have is, in his words, hanging by a thread. Um, FMS is in the same boat, uh, that's the system that we use in the front office. Um, it also, it is on a server, however, that server has far exceeded its lifespan. The normal lifespan for a server is between five to seven years, and ours is...
Beyond that.
Way beyond that, um, and it's had several replacements in it. Um, so he, he told us that they're kind of neck and neck on both being important as far as being replaced. Um, he did say that FMS would be, hopefully, in the next, um, year or two, we'd include cloud type system, kind of like Apple uses. However, we still have a domain, so we still have to have a server. Um, and we did talk to him about the possibility of having both of those on the same server, and he said that that's not appropriate with the type of information that the police department holds, it needs to be separate. So you have in your packets two different quotes. These are for, they're not two separate quotes for each server, it's, each one is for two servers, but one is for a five-year contract, and one is for a seven-year contract. The difference in price is, um, not much.
Just over a hundred dollars.
Yeah, for the seven-year versus the five. Um, it is an investment, however, according to him, our, our server situation is quite dumber.
Is that the deal?
Yes, and there should be two in there. And at the bottom, one will say seven-year, and one will say five-year.
And this is with the police department?
Both.
And the... Just the whole...
Yeah.
This is basically the all of town hall.
Please note, because the tariffs are killing us, um, this expires on the nineteenth. If we wait to do anything, the price will go up, yeah.
So is, this is, you know, this is obligating us for five years or for seven years?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And so, is this something we have to have, or something that we would like to have?
Yeah, he said that the server for the PD is hanging, it's, it's not even on a server, it's just on a laptop, and it has to be on a server.
The security of our information is at risk. We did ask those questions.
So we pay the whole thing at once?
It does, yes.
And for speeding, we can get it in before this fiscal year ends.
Well, not worried about the tariffs.
I would like the motion to approve the seven-year contract. I second it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any more discussion?
I mean, if you're willing to do it, and the seven-year contract compared to the five-year contract is only a hundred and forty...
Hundred, like a hundred and thirty more dollars.
Yeah.
Very little.
If you're going to do it, that would be the way to go.
It's like less than a hundred.
It's kind of expensive, you know?
That's not a bad price for the servers, especially when you're looking at two.
And what would you want on the servers? Is this like the tax records and...
Everything, everything.
Ordinances and, I mean, everything with the town of Pownell?
Yes.
Will be on these two servers?
Yes, all of the police department would be on a dedicated server to the police department, and all, on the other, um, server is dedicated to the town's domain. So even if FMS moves to a cloud, because we have a domain, we have to have a server.
Domain and admin.
Yeah.
Even though we don't pay bills on the website or anything.
So any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, can we please have a roll call vote?
Call for him.
I don't know enough, I'm going to see.
Hall.
We wait, uh, what are we voting on, like, seven years?
The server, yeah, seven years.
Seven years. I'd say yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes? The next item on the agenda is the VRSA renewal. That is the Virginia Risk Sharing Association.
Yeah, if you look, that is the court for the insurance.
Where's the, where's the program page?
There was one, there, it does show that we are eligible for a two thousand dollar grant on that. The thirty-five. I think it's next year.
What is this rate in comparison with previous years?
It has increased.
It has increased, but we also increased the deductible last year to try and bring the pricing down.
What is the deductible last year compared to this year?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, I press.
Ten thousand is what our deductible is.
And then last year, what was it?
We put it at ten thousand last year.
Okay, it's ten thousand this year.
Before that, I think it was like two thousand, maybe?
What was last year's?
I thought it was on here, that's what I was trying to look for.
You thought what?
I thought that last year's was on here, like I thought it should be.
I thought it was too. It just feels like something's missing here. Um, can we take a brief recess and I think I can clear it back down off the email.
We'll take a brief recess. Um, hit back here at eight oh five. Barbara, Barbara. Not even top three. Barbara Lover.
The only complications I can say is now the other. Yeah, I know.
Probably not as much as the group.
I think that's how much we got.
Cause that's, I mean, I was.
Caritas.
People get very clever and call me and I'll simply, we, people get hurt.
It's just. Local option, which is.
I know. That's, that's really dumb with it, but that. Better things, I know. And sometimes it's good downhill, you know?
Our son. We had water, we should have for weeks and then we get that in real slow, you know, pour water on our. That's not a joke. They'll be fine.
You should get in, you got the crazy stuff like that by yourself.
You're not reading college. Sure, I'll come to you in Richmond.
There's, there's.
Did I lose my? I don't recall that. Don't go with the next.
I know, I seen that from court. Sweden trying to clean up. Try, I think you have that. I thought it was down from somewhere.
When you're young, you were good.
You weren't.
Wait, did he? He called Cheryl.
I think it's good, get, get much that. Get some money out of there.
Sure.
Pretty check out, get out more.
Do we, uh, quit for that?
I don't got time to sit down.
That is cool.
You look outside, you'll see more than that, Amber, all the time. You're going from over to the chambers to the house or somewhere, it's all. I need that so I can get it. I see we own that. Well, that's. What, what's the gun, was it? We're saying about some.
That's one of the issues on the agenda. Yes, there's a gap set. It's here.
Oh, yeah. And we will, now we convene, we'll go back into order. It's on, yeah. We, back to VRSA renewal. We were supplied with these sheets. Do we, once we explain them? Any discussion on?
I think it's pretty well self-explanatory, last year we take twenty-eight thousand. This year we're at thirty-five, but we aren't eligible for that two thousand dollars. Yeah, showing us to thirty-three.
And adventure, that's right?
Yes. Yeah, it's not cheap. It's not cheap. And that's on every, that doesn't include the, what is. What is separate.
So we have eleven vehicles. How does that break down?
Is there a motion? Someone would like to present?
I make the motion to authorize PD to sign the agreement on the insurance and let's get it paid.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Can we have a second? Is there any more discussion? Can we please have a roll call vote?
Hall, Horn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Is there any more discussion on VRSA renewal? We'll go to the next item, which is public comment rules. Is there any discussion or motion?
That is me. I would make the motion to approve the public comment rules that are listed, that are attached in your council packet.
So is this, uh, you know, a creation out of the mind of a particular person or is this from a, uh, some particular place?
No. No, this came from some conversations that have been had with regard to the excessiveness of public comments. Limits each person to three minutes. If they want to speak at, at one or the other, um, they need to sign up beforehand so that they can be called in order. If they're in groups, then they need to designate a person on behalf of the group.
So I think we already have all this except for speaker, uh, registration. We have a lot, I think it's in our.
We, we're a small town, we have less than twenty people making comments. We don't need to sign up to make public comments here in town.
I made my motion.
Well, we're discussing the motion.
Well, we need a second.
So I would like for the mayor to read. Oh, we don't have a second.
Yeah, we don't, we need a second. Is there a second to this?
I second it.
Okay.
So do we?
Any discussion? Okay, the, this is the motion of council member Kennedy. Town and pound, public comment rules for town council meetings. Adopted, this is what is, um, proposed, um, adopted today, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, is what it proposed. Says in order to promote orderly, efficient, and respectful proceedings during public meetings, the town council of pound established the following rules governing public comment periods. Number one, time limit. Each individual shall be limited to a total of three minutes of public comment per meeting, regardless of whether they choose to speak during the first or second comment period. Time may not be split up, extended across comment periods. Number two, no yielding of time. Speakers may not yield any portion of their time to another individual. Each person who wishes to speak must do so in their own allotted time. Number three, group representation. When a group of individuals wishes to address the same topic, one representative should be designated to speak on behalf of the group. This ensures efficiency and avoids repetitive comments. Number four, content of comments. All comments must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction or business of the town pound. No speaker shall participate in personal attacks, threats, slander, profanity, or other disruptive or abusive language. Such actions will not be tolerated. Number five, speaker registration. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. The signup list will be made available, the meeting location, and it will be used to call speakers in order. And on the back, enforcement, the mayor or presiding officer has the authority to enforce these rules, including the discretion to end a speaker's comments if they violate the rules outlined herein or otherwise disrupt the meeting. And then it has the date when it is approved by, and then it has by the order of town council. Town, council of pound. That is the motion that is presented. Is there any more discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I think, I'd like to make some amendments to this. Under number one, instead of, uh, three minutes of public comment per meeting, regardless of whether they choose to speak during the first or second comment period, I would change that to three minutes of public comment per public comment period.
So are you making that as a motion?
This is an amendment to your motion.
I wouldn't accept that if you're not.
No, I'm not asking you to. I know you wouldn't.
Then you need to make a friendly, or, or make a substitute motion.
I'm making an amendment, you can amend a motion, can't you, Mr. Attorney?
No, you wouldn't have to make a substitute motion.
At the, at the end of the day, whether we either agree on what is the amended proposal, which will be your substitute motion, or we don't, so I would say that you could just go through and say what you would like it to say and then make that as a substitute.
I mean, I can, I just, I thought you could amend motions. The one night I didn't drink my Robert Rules. Okay, so anyway, under number one, I'll repeat myself since I was interrupted. Uh, three minutes of public comment per public comment period and strike meeting regardless of whether they choose to speak during the first or second comment period. Ex out number three, which is group representation. If there is a citizen who pays taxes and there's a group of people who all want to speak on the same subject, they ought to have the right to speak on that same subject.
Are you making a motion or?
If he's listening to discuss.
I'm explaining my substitute motion.
Okay, so that would come during discussion.
Is it discussion?
No, he's making a substitute.
Well, this is, we are under Robert Rules for small groups. I mean, that's fine, that's fine.
I mean, he's able to make a substitute motion and go through and then we can discuss everything.
Exactly.
I think that's what he's doing, right?
Right, that's what I'm doing. So, I'll repeat myself. Under number one, get rid of meeting regardless of whether they choose to speak during the first or second comment period. Replace that with public comment period. Ex out number three, which is the group representation. And it's just crazy, we don't have over twenty people make comments at these meetings. And number five, ex out number five, nobody should have to sign up prior to the start of the meeting. If they forget, then they're off the, they don't have their ability to do it. So we're in a small town, we don't need this. That's my substitute motion, we'll put it that way.
We have a substitute motion? Is there a second to a substitute motion?
I second it.
We have a second? Is there any discussion on the substitute motion?
I mean, what we're doing here is very clear. We're taking away six minutes of public comment and we're making it three minutes of public comment. What we're doing here is we're saying that if more than one person wants to say the same thing, only one person can get up and speak on behalf of that group. What we're doing here is saying if you don't sign up, if you come in late, then you don't get to speak. And that is, to me, a First Amendment issue and we're a small town. We usually have less than twenty commoners, probably less than fifteen if it goes to the minutes. We don't need, this is overkill, but I'm willing, as long as number three and number five, and the changes are made to number one to pass the substitute motion.
Call for the question.
Okay, we have a call for a question on whether to vote for the substitute motion. Can we have a vote, a roll call vote for that, please? Some voting on whether or not to vote or not.
Point of order. Why not just move the ordinance coming to you?
Okay, excuse me. We are in a, can we please have the roll call vote?
Hall, Horn.
I had nothing else to say, so yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay, we now are voting on the substitute motion. Do we have a roll call vote?
Can we read the substitute motion as amended?
You want number one to write, each individual shall be limited to a total of three minutes of public comment.
Per public comment.
Per public comment period. And. And then three. Or five. Three and five are taken out.
Can we have a roll call vote on the substitute motion?
Hall, Horn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No.
Mullins.
No.
Powers.
I want to say yes.
Okay, and the substitute motion passes? These are now, should we?
Yeah, I think you already have the redraft thing and then perhaps some more for you to sign.
Okay.
And put them with our rules of, uh, procedure that we adopted in January.
Okay, so we will, I will get with the caller and the manager, one of them, and we will go over that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is parking wheels on sidewalks. Is there any discussion or motion?
We do have ordinance currently and we need to get that updated because we do have people that are parking on the sidewalk. You know, we can't complain about damage to the sidewalks. If, if we allow it to continue. So, I'm making the motion to table it until next month. So, I'm making the motion to title it until next month, and Kevin has a copy of the ordinance, that way he can look it over and see what we need to do to put it in place.
And I'd like to point out too, that the chief raised a good point earlier about, I think it's Muni code, isn't that right, chief?
Yes.
Muni code. These sort of services help towns to develop their ordinances, and kind of, because there's, there's a lot of ordinances, or at least if you're doing business correctly, there should be a fair amount of ordinances. And as he mentioned, they need to be on file with the clerk's office too, there are force and so on. I think, I think that's something that the chief could also look into in terms of, maybe next meeting coming to council with some idea of what that would take. I know a lot of these small towns, they, they kind of have their chief of police, you know, go through and update their ordinances because they're numerous. But specifically, I'm happy to look at this as well, and come back next weekend to better understand.
No second motion?
To adopt. Okay, we have a second, can the motion be titled till next month? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Is there any opposed?
Who made that motion, I'm sorry?
No.
Ms. Kennedy. Okay, and we, the second was by Councilman Hall, Horn?
Thank you.
If there's none opposed, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the resolution, fire department. Is there any discussion or motion?
So that one is more of a heads up, because currently we do cover the fire department on our insurance. Once they come off, that will reduce significantly. Eight thousand dollars is what it would reduce our insurance by. So it's just a heads up until we get there.
Okay, any more discussion on item number twenty-seven? The last item is other business? Okay, item number twenty-eight is other business. Is there any discussion on the other business?
Just something I noticed, the, the lights are back on, Chief Wilcox. The lights are back on at the skill games place. Do they have insert your money machines, or do they have another kind of machine there?
They were not in compliance last month. They will be in compliance by tomorrow, maybe.
Okay, so just be sure to check it out, make sure they're compliant.
We check it today.
The letter, the letter of the law.
Oh, there's no other business? We will go on to the next item, which is public comment. Anyone would like to get up and give a public comment from the audience? Can you do so now? Please state your name, and whether you live in or out of the town, for the record.
My name is Jerry Lord, I'm in town. This is the third meeting where they have tried to take away a three-minute session that was added in February. Also, my question about how many hours our police officers are putting in was not answered. What has been approved for the budget is not what hours are being worked.
Is that something she could fool you?
He answered the question.
He did.
You ask him, he said a hundred and seventy-two hours.
Right.
Are in the budget.
No.
No, he said it.
That's what he said they served, for two weeks.
Is that what they work, for two weeks?
You can address the council, please.
Well, he did, that's not what he said.
That's what he, that's what he told us?
That's what he said.
He said, he said the budget approves two full time off. And then he calculated how many hours that would be.
So without giving names?
I, I don't want to know names, I want to know how many hours we have to listen.
Without giving names, can she fool you, how many hours we put in about police on a certain?
My policy is always the person can fool you any question that they have for any records that they think the town might have. And our website does have a link to the four-year rights and responsibilities, so that you can get some assistance in what your rights and responsibilities are.
I can tell from patrol. There's more than a hundred and seventy-two hours being put in. He's, he's talking just patrol for a hundred and seventy-two hours.
I'm just saying, if she wants more detailed information, you can fool you.
But they were after a lot.
Okay, the attorney advised, thank you for your comment. Does anyone else would like to give a public comment? If there's no other public comment, we move to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Can we have a second? Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Hall, Horn.
Yes.
Hall. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Towers.
And the motion passes.
Are you okay, Drew?
I'm checking. Yeah, I'm all right.
Will you be okay going out? How are you doing?
I'm all right. How are you doing?